Please join me in the salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, roll call please, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Losi?
Here.
I see that Councilmember Stanfield is connecting, or Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here. All right, our first item for tonight is an outstanding community service award presented to Officer Dennis Stevens from the Fortuna American Legion Post 205.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I would like to introduce Walt Charlton, Mr. Walt Charlton, Sergeant at Arms with the American Legion Post 205.
Ron, yeah, you're on, very good. Hello again, my name is Walter Charlton, I'm a proud member of the Walker Bailey American Legion Post 205 here in Fortuna. We've taken a break on some presentations for a couple of years because COVID, but we're happy to reinstate that tradition now. And our excellent and service award is presented to a, where we recognize a local birth responder who has demonstrated outstanding community service. And tonight, I'm proud to present this to Officer Dennis Stevens. Thank you, and I'm going to read it. American Legion Excellent Excellence in Service Award presented to Dennis Stevens, K-9 officer with the Fortuna Police Department in recognition of exceptional service rendered through the community of Fortuna, California. Presented by the Walker Bailey American Legion Post 205 since November 11th, 2021, with Veterans Day, but we were kind of shut down on Veterans Day, so for a few weeks later, and you can just enjoy it even more. Thank you for your service. Thank you, sir. For getting, I believe that I believe that Steve has a few things to say about you being chosen.
Yes, thank you, Walt. So I was asked to read the accompanying certificate or warrant with the award, so I'll go ahead and do that now. It was my distinct pleasure to recommend Fortuna Police Department K-9 Officer Dennis Stevens for the Legion Post 205 Outstanding Community Service Award. Dennis has served the community for a little more than five years as a Fortuna police officer. During his career, he has served as a patrolman, field training officer, and as a member of the Regional Special Weapons and Tactics SWAT team. During his time on SWAT, Dennis has served the Humboldt County region with distinction and excellence. Prior to his law enforcement career, Dennis served the community as a paramedic and also served our country as a member of the United States Coast Guard. Dennis was selected in 2020 as the handler for Fortuna Police K-9 Kane. The arrival of Kane earmarked the Fortuna Police Department's reestablishment of the Department K-9 program, which had been absent for over two years. Since being assigned as the handler for Kane, Dennis has embraced the true meaning of community-oriented policing and produced positive and tangible results in the area of developing community relationships. Instead of driving around, Dennis spends a significant amount of his time parking his vehicle and walking around town with his K-9 Kane. Dennis and Kane routinely visit with community members who are out and about and also visit with businesses and business owners and other organizations within the Ill River Valley. Dennis and Kane frequently put on K-9 demonstrations for youth organizations, schools, and other community groups, which bring a sense of humanity and approachability to the image of the Fortuna Police Department. Dennis is an individual who demonstrates the highest values, excellent moral character, and impressive ethical decision-making. As the chief, I can always count on Dennis to make the right decision, no matter what the circumstance. Dennis has an innate understanding of leadership and understands what it means to be a leader, not only within the Fortuna Police Department, but within the community at large. Dennis has shared his visions for leadership and community-oriented policing and has influenced his peers to seek to understand the value of leadership and community policing. He has done so through department presentations and dialogue with his coworkers. I am, I am proud to highlight Dennis and his commitment to our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Officer Stevens, would you like to say anything?
Absolutely, thank you. I'd like to thank the American Legion for their recognition. It's very refreshing to be recognized for something that I enjoy doing in my chosen profession as well as my previous service. I'd like to thank Chief Day, the Fortuna Police Department, the City Council, as well as all of my coworkers. Any one of them would have been an excellent choice if it's. And I really appreciate that I was selected out of various candidates that could have been selected. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations. We certainly appreciate all the work that you do for our community. Anybody else want to say anything real quick?
I'd just say, thank, thank Officer Stevens for all that he does and for being such an awesome ambassador for the city of Fortuna and for the police department. Thank you.
And just to close, I'd like to say, Officer Stevens, for all you do for the city of Fortuna, our community, and thanks again for your service. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you, guys. Moving on to our next item, we have a City Council discussion regarding the presented by Emily Hobelmann. Emily?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Emily Hobelmann. If you don't know me, I'm the president of the Fortuna Business Improvement District Board of Directors. I'm here tonight to give you a quick update on what's going on with Fbid. And our long cherished board member, Director Thompson, is here with me, and she has something to share after I finish, so I'll go quick. First, I want to update you on the audit. I've checked in with Barbara Guest, who's doing the audit for us at ALSB. She does not yet have an end date, but she has everything she needs, she thinks. She is compiling everything by year, and she's making the annual journal entries, and after that, she'll start on financial statements. So she can't give a timeline yet, but she says she's working as fast as she can, and she wants this done as soon as possible, like we do. I also want to let you know that we interviewed a couple of candidates for the executive director position last week, and we're hoping to have someone in place by the beginning of the year. I really want to thank city staff, especially Siana, for helping me assemble materials for the interview process, including a scoring rubric, interview questions, a script. It was enormously helpful, so we really appreciate the city's support on that. I still need some help getting a job description together and a contract as well, so I'll probably ask the city for more help with that in the next week. So we scheduled an annual meeting, but I'm going to ask the board to cancel the annual meeting. I just personally don't have time to put it together at this point, so that's something we can consider pushing back to the new year, but I don't think we have the steam right now to pull it off on the 16th like we were planning. So I wanted to let you know about that. And a quick update on the holidays, and I think Director Thompson will say more about this. Of course, she's spearheading the lighted parade for us. We had Shop Small Saturday be a success. Director Laura Morris partnered with Renee at the Chamber, and they distributed all kinds of Shop Small schwag on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So it was really great to see one of our board members take that initiative and to make that happen for the community. We did not pull off the Fortuna Bucks program or Kids Free Movies this year, so some things have fallen by the wayside, but some things are still happening. So the last thing I want to talk about quickly is that we need some more board members. We had a sudden resignation last week, which was unfortunate but not unexpected. And we are whittled down to a pretty small board here. So I just want to appeal to the community and to the City Council to help us recruit some board members for Fbid. I know a lot of people in this community have put in time with Fbid over the years. Tammy has spent a lot of time on this, and Jeremy's working with us now, but we do need some fresh blood. So I've talked with Merritt a bit about getting a PSA out there. We could just use some support in that respect. It's not a matter of lacking motivation, it's just simply a matter of lacking time to publicize the need for board members at this point. So I, I want to let the council know that this is going on and that we need some help in this respect. So that's it for me. Does anyone have any questions before I hand it to Director Thompson?
Have you actually made an offer to a candidate for the, okay, for that position?
Not yet. We're hoping to. We have, we have some momentum on this, so we really want to get a staff person.
Does anyone else also have any questions for Emily? I'm not seeing any, so Erica?
Hi, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council for having me tonight. I have two things that I want to cover really fast, and I know I'm a talker, so I promise to get to it. First is the electric lighted parade. We are doing this baby on a shoestring, but it is coming together, and the response from the community has been amazing. We have currently just about 12 confirmed entries, which is pretty exciting and pretty on par with our average of about 15 year-over-year. So it should be a really good event. We have judges coming from representatives from all over the city, City Council, the PD, the Fire Department. The We Ought Tribe is sending a tribal member to come and be a judge, and the Chamber, Renee, has agreed to be a judge. So we have all of the NFbid. Laura Morris is going to come and be a judge for us, so we have all of the key players involved in the judging. And we have a Barry Bernard from the We Ought Tribe is also going to be doing a special holiday blessing over the parade this year at 6:15. We're gonna film it live or stream it live from our Facebook page. Super excited to be partnering with him on this. He's a wonderful man and definitely looking forward to seeing him around a little bit more and just partnering with our tribal neighbors. We're very fortunate to have them. And we all live in the beautiful Ill River Valley, which is We Ought Lands. And so we want to honor that, and we want to honor reaching towards the future together as neighbors and community members. And so I'm super excited to have that as part of it. And then we will be in conjunction with the Downtown Merchants Association, so I want to thank them because we've been working together on that. And I do want to give a special shout out to Lieutenant Matt Everhart of the Fortuna PD. Thank you so much for all the work you've put in, and Bob Nat at Public Works. You guys are really helping us get all this under control and in safety and all of that fun stuff. So thank you, guys, for the time and effort you're putting into, into our permit for that and helping me and helping answer my questions. Last but certainly not least, I am going to officially, I've thought a lot about this, and I'm going to try not to be emotional, but we all know Erica's a crier, so. I've served on the Fbid board for 10 years, eight years as the president. And the education that I've received in the last 18 months about what that position actually is, is huge and immense. And I'm so grateful to Emily Hobelmann, who has stepped in and who is doing an absolutely wonderful job. She has came in against insurmountable odds, and she is just really taken the bull by the horns, and she's been fair and kind and consistent throughout the entire process. And we're very, very lucky to have Emily as part of our Fortuna leadership. I did not make it easy on her in the beginning, and my ego definitely got in the way. But she is a wonderful lady and an asset to Fortuna and to the board. And it is with that that I am officially announcing my resignation from the Fbid board effective December 31st. The parade's gonna be my last hurrah. And I am here to, to help make it a really great event. The truth is, is that I love serving Fortuna, and I love serving in this capacity. The last couple of years have been very hard, and I know they've been hard for a lot of us in a lot of different ways, but it has definitely, and I guess the last six months or so have definitely proven to me that I would like to take time to be with my family and my kids, and my daughter's senior year is next year. And so I also am going to put to bed the rumor that I'm going to be running for City Council next year. I'm not going to do that, because the years that I have coming up with my kiddos, they're irreplaceable. And I'm not gonna trade that yet. I'm not going away. I'm coming back. I'm always going to be a part of the community. You guys aren't getting rid of me anytime soon, but you know, I have a big heart and I have a big mouth. And what I've learned is that my heart has to really be in the right place if this big mouth is gonna make a real difference. And lately, I just had to really recognize where my heart needed to be. And that's with my family and my business, and so I really appreciate my time in Fortuna and on the Fbid board. And as far as Emily asking the community about serving on the board, I truly believe that it's a great place to start. What I will say to the council is, do me a favor and make sure that your board members are trained properly from the very beginning. I think that's something that the council needs to oversee and that needs to be held accountable. When I started on the Fbid board 10 years ago, I was handed a four-inch binder full of paperwork, and it said, "Here you go, here's what you're doing." And I put it on my shelf, and I don't think I looked at it for 10 years. So there needs to be some accountability in that. And I think it's important that the council has stepped up and is really helping Fbid this last year, and I think that really needs to continue. And we have a very valuable resource in our Business Improvement District, and I'm glad to see the council being a part of that, and I hope that that continues. And I think one of the biggest things we could do is help make it a really robust board that is trained properly in what they need to be doing. And so I appreciate all of you very much, and thank you for this time. And I'm gonna go ahead and stop because I could talk forever. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ladies. Does anyone have any questions from the council, either for Emily or Erica at this time? All right, seeing none, we would just, thanks for being here and giving us an update and keeping us informed. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Emily, for all that you're doing to hold it all together. I know it's, it's a daunting task, and you're appreciated. All right, now we have oral comments from the public. If anyone from the public wants to comment on something that is not on the agenda, or if someone wants to call the number on your screen and join us, you can do that as well. And while we're waiting to see if anyone has public comment, we'll go ahead and approve the consent calendar. We have six items, including City Council minutes, report of disbursements, approval of the contract with access Humboldt, approved Resolution 2021-40 to authorize the purchase of unimproved real property for the expansion of New Bird Park and authorize the city to execute a certificate of acceptance, approval of the amended part-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 with Resolution 2021-41, and the findings made in Resolution 2021-32 regarding the continued state of emergency continued to exist and authorizing the continued use of teleconference meetings. Does anyone wish to pull any of those items? All right, seeing none, does someone want to make a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendars, Brendan.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
I don't see anyone participating on our meeting that has their hand up. Siana, any phone calls for public comment?
Nobody else has joined the meeting.
Okay, so we will close public comment and move on to City Council business. Our first item is to authorize the city manager to execute an updated memorandum of understanding with the Fortuna Garden Club.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I have the staff report. So staff's recommendation is that the council authorize the city manager to execute revised MOU with the garden club. And really, the effort was to reduce the annual fee that they pay to the city for beautification and just clarify their use of city facilities. And I just also wanted to take this opportunity to just recognize the Fortuna Garden Club. They, they have planted flowers and maintain public spaces in the city of Fortuna for over 20 years. They oversee many areas, including around the River Lodge and city parks, at local schools, at senior centers near the library, and the bulbout planters in the downtown area. And then they just recently agreed to take on some of the planting beds around City Hall. So we're really excited and always admire the work that they do and all the effort that goes into that. The Garden Club provides the service to the city at little or no cost. Actually, the Fortuna Garden Club is required to pay the city $500 annually in the current MOU, which is to go towards beautification projects in exchange for rent of the River Lodge and Monday Club for their regular meetings and the daffodil show. Staff is recommending that the city revise MOU to allow the Fortuna Garden Club to use the Monday Club for their regular meetings, the Cook Shack and Runner Park once a year, and the River Lodge once a year for the annual daffodil show at no cost in exchange for the services that they provide to the city to plant and maintain the landscaped areas. The cost to the city for this modification MOU would be the reduction in revenue and the amount of $500 annually that's currently required as a donation to the city and the rental fee that would normally be paid to rent the River Lodge for one day annually, which is half of the cost. They rent it for two days. So the rental fee, the city wouldn't see that revenue at its amount of $1,080. The copy of the draft MOU is attached with the staff report. And I just want to say, you know, this is something that I've wanted to do for some time, and we did reduce the River Lodge rent as a part of the last MOU, but really, they do a wonderful job. The bulbouts around town look amazing, and, and so we're happy to bring this to council and take a moment to just say thank you, and we appreciate what the Garden Club is doing for the city.
Thank you, Merritt. We'll go ahead and open up public comment to see if anyone raises their hand or joins us on the phone. Any questions for Merritt from the council, any comments?
I would just say that over the years, I've seen what a great job they do in taking care of the bulb sidewalks and the reason that we probably asked them to take care of some of the flower beds around City Hall is because we know they'll do it and they'll do a great job at it. And I just, I appreciate what they do. I've worked on a couple of projects with them, and they do a wonderful job. So I think this is well deserved. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Like to make a comment?
Yeah, Mike, and then Deborah.
Yeah, they've been doing this for over 20 years, and what, two, three times a week, you'll see them out there working along Main Street, working in the bulbs and the bulbs. It's just a great community service that they provide for us, and I'm just more than happy to require them not to have to pay that $500 annually. So, good job, and we appreciate all that you do.
Deborah, you wanted to say a few words?
I just wanted to thank you. This is a tremendously generous gift to us. You know, the daffodil show, especially the rent of the River Lodge, was always quite an expense for us, because that's a free community event. We charge no admission. So just that alone is a huge benefit to us. And we really enjoy what we do, you know? It's, the whole thing is about service back to the community. And I, we, I know all of us in the Garden Club really appreciate the city's commendation to us and this generous gift, so thank you very much.
You are welcome. It's, I think, the least we can do, so I'm really glad that Merritt took the initiative to bring this to the council. And I do have some tulip bulbs I want to donate to you guys, and I keep forgetting to bring them, so bug me.
Ah, maybe they'll go in the beds there around the City Hall.
Yes.
That'd be kind of nice.
All right, anyone else have any comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, does someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amended MOU with the Fortuna Garden Club.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thanks again, Deborah. Our next item is to consider approving a supplemental budget request for the rollover of fiscal year 2021 major E funds to fiscal year 21 to 22 and designate $50,000 for the Runner Park, Runner Community Recreation and Park District Benefit Assessment Project as mouthful. Merritt?
Thanks, Mayor Long. So we brought this to the council, and there's an element of this which would pay for the Assessment Benefit District. And the council asked me to go back and make sure before we brought this forward that we made sure that the Measuring Committee was on board with the direction, the allocation of funds towards the Runner Rec District. So I'll just repeat real briefly that staff is recommending that the council approve the $80,000 of unused measuring funds for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 to fiscal year 2122. Last year, the council allocated the $80,000 measuring funding as a part of the annual budget to be used as a grant match for the Prop 68 per capita program, which was, which at the time, we expected to require a 20% match for an expected $200,000 in funding for both the city and the Runner Community Recreation Park District. So 20% for $400,000 would have been $80,000, so that's why that number was budgeted. When the guidelines from the per capita program were released, it was determined that the city would not have to provide the 20% grant match because it met certain income eligibility requirements, and therefore, the $80,000 was no longer needed. Ultimately, the Prop 68 program provided $177,982 to the city of Fortuna and the, and the same amount to the Runner Community Recreation and Park District. And, and the Runner Rec District agreed to use entirety of their funding for the acquisition of the parcel adjacent to New Bird Park, which we expect to close escrow on within the next one to two weeks, with remainder of the purchase costs coming from the city's per capita allocation. The total cost of the acquisition, including the purchase title and extra escrow, is expected to be approximately $360,000, and we'll use nearly all of the Prop 68 grant funds. Runner Rec District is at a critical point at being able to identify a funding source for the development of a pool and is currently considering a Benefit Assessment District to fund the development and maintenance of the pool. Prop 68 funds were not eligible for the studies and outreach needed for this effort, and that's why city staff is recommending that the city fund the effort in the amount of $50,000 to bring the assessment forward to determine whether or not ultimately the public supports and wants to pay for a pool. If $50,000 is used for the Rec District, then $30,000 would remain from the $80,000 rollover to add to the park's acquisition improvement budget. And if with that project funded, $230,000 will remain for other park acquisition improvement projects after that. So that concludes my staff report. Staff's recommendation is that the council approve the rollover of $80,000 of unused measuring funds from fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2122 for the acquisition improvement of projects and recommend that the council allocate funds to the Runner Community to pay for the assessment benefit study and the assessment benefit study for the creation of a pool. So just to clarify too, the city wouldn't be transferring funds to Runner Rec District. The city would be paying for the study that's needed. So that project would be overseen and paid for by the city, not the Rec District. So it wouldn't be a direct transfer, so. And there was unanimous vote to recommend that the council make this action from the Measuring Committee on November 30th.
All right, thank you, Merritt. We'll open public comment. If anyone wants to call the number on your screen, or anyone that is on the call wants to raise your hand, we can take your comments. In the meantime, does anyone from the council have any questions or comments? All right, seeing nothing from the council. Do we have any hands up from our participants? Becky, are you trying to raise your hand? No? Okay. All right, if no one has any comments, we will close public comment and move on to a motion.
I make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request to rollover unused measure E funds from fiscal year 2021 to be used in fiscal year 2122 for various parks and recreation-related projects and designate $50,000 for the Runner Community Recreation and Park District Benefit Assessment. and designate $50,000 for the Runner Community Recreation and Park District Benefit Assessment Project.
We have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is introduction and first reading of ordinance 2021 dash seven 50 amending the chapter 9.24 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide amended regulations for camping and related activity within the city.
Thanks, Mayor Long. I just wanted to say our city attorney, Ryan Plotz, will be presenting this item and that he and our police chief really worked hard to, to come up with this. And so with that, I turn it over to our city attorney, Ryan Plotz.
Uh, thanks, uh, Merritt and, uh, good, good evening, uh, council. Um, so before you today is a complete, uh, repeal and, uh, replacement of chapter 9.24 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. And this is brought before you tonight as a result of, uh, federal litigation, um, in 2019 that resulted in the, um, now, um, controversial, um, Martin versus City of Boise case. This was, uh, litigation that came from the Federal Ninth Circuit in which the Ninth Circuit held that the U.S. Constitution's, um, Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment prevents a city from criminalizing sleeping outside on public property when the, uh, person has no other alternative, uh, means. Um, and those alternative means include, um, shelter space, uh, within the particular jurisdiction that is reasonably available to the individual. Um, the U.S. Supreme Court declined to review the decision of the Ninth Circuit, meaning that the, uh, Martin versus Boise case and its holding is now law within the Ninth, uh, Circuit, which includes California and other Western states. The decision has largely been criticized by other municipalities up and down, uh, the coast and within the Ninth Circuit. Um, the League of California Cities has been, uh, very vocal in its, uh, opposition and, uh, request to the United Supreme Court to reconsider the decision um, and to come up with a decision that is more workable and provides more structured guidance to cities within the Ninth Circuit. The decision, um, i- is largely, um, been the reason why the city of Fortuna has, um, stopped, uh, criminal enforcement of camping on public property and in public places. Um, and the chief is, as can weigh in on this, but, um, recently, um, the officers and the Fortuna Police Department have seen an uptick in the erection of shelters, temporary shelters, um, and sleeping and lying in entrances to businesses along Main Street um, and had trend, have been having trouble, um, attempting to gain compliance through voluntary means. Um, because the ability to bring misdemeanor charges or other infraction charges has been prevented by, uh, the Martin versus City of Boise case. So before you tonight is a comprehensive ordinance that regulates both camping, which is, um, the use of public places, uh, for the erection of temporary shelters, the use of public places for, uh, cooking food, um, the use of public places for storing of personal property. Um, and it also regulates the use of public places for merely sleeping or lying or sitting upon public property. And this ordinance draws an important distinction between camping on the one hand and sleeping on the other. Because the aim of the Martin versus Boise case was to prevent cities from criminalizing, sleeping, lying and sitting on public property. It does not speak to the larger issue of camping and the things that, uh, that comes with, including the erection of temporary shelters on public property. So those are broken up and the first section is intended to regulate camping. Um, and this first section prevents camping, um, as defined in the ordinance and the use of camping equipment and paraphernalia also is defined in public places regardless of the time of the day in the following locations. City parks within 75 feet of any officially designated trail um, on the River Lodge property in open space, um, and that's formerly designated open space, residential zoning districts, neighborhood commercial zoning districts and retail commercial districts. It also prohibits camping, the use of camping equipment and camping paraphernalia in all public places within the city uh, during the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Um, it pro- prohibits the storage of personal property in public places, um, anywhere throughout the city. And it also includes an orderly process for the disposition of personal property when found in a public place. The second section, uh, regulates sleeping, lying, uh, and sitting in public places. Under this section, uh, the following conduct is prohibited. Obstructing pedestrian or vehicular traffic by sitting, lying or sleeping in a public place or in doorways or entrances or exits to buildings. Sleeping in a public place between the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily throughout the city. Sleeping in a public place between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM unless there are no sleeping spaces practically available in any shelter or if there does not exist any viable alternative to sleeping in a public place. And that, that unless portion is a direct result of the Martin versus Boise case. Um, it also prohibits sleeping in any officially designated open space. And it also prohibits sleeping in a vehicle between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM um, in any public place or upon any privately owned parking area used for the parking of customers of any business enterprise without the consent of the owner of the business enterprise. Um, and then the final section of the proposed, uh, ordinance continues without substantive change the city's current regulations on camping on private property. The existing regulations prohibit the use of private property for camping unless the person camping is doing so with the consent of the property owner and camping on that private property is otherwise allowed pursuant to our current zoning regulations. Um, and so that's a summary of the ordinance, um, and I'm happy to address, uh, any questions that the council may have.
Let's open it up for public comment and while we're waiting to see if anyone calls in, um, any questions or comments from council?
Any question?
Okay.
Um, first off, um, I just want to thank, um, the chief and um, for drafting this and putting this together as well as, um, Ryan. Um, for assisting to put this together. I think this is a step in the right direction, especially after, uh, law enforcement having their hands tied with the Boise, um, decision. And I, I think our citizens are just going to, um, relish being able to call in and report some of these violations and then see action taken uh, to stop some of this. So my question is with regard to the calling in. Um, nothing here, um, causes law for the need for law enforcement to have a complaint before taking action. Is that correct? They can take action on an observed violation as any law.
That's correct.
Okay. It helps to have a citizen call in and make that complaint and not so rely solely on law enforcement's observations, but, um, um, law enforcement, if they see these violations can take action, um, at their own direction.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
I would just say that in light of the Martin v. Boise decision, this is probably the, the best that we could hope for and it, it does have teeth and it recognizes the precedent set in the Ninth Circuit and I hope that this will help alleviate some of the obstructions and such that we've seen downtown and take care of things. Thank you.
So I had a comment that I sent. Oh, chief, go ahead. Casey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Long. I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Plots publicly for, uh, assisting with this project. And, um, you know, just kind of explain for the council's edification that over the past 90 days, it really has become, challenging with some of the public sleeping that's occurred right in front of some of these businesses and um, just to council member Losi's point, um, you know, we have never changed being a full service department or proactively dealing with things. We will continue to do so in that manner. Uh, but these are, these are, uh, flagrant violations where on a daily basis, we're driving through town and we're making these observations and essentially what Martin v. Boise did was, you know, cuff us to the point where, you know, we educate and encourage and attempt to assist. But in a large majority of those contacts, that education and assistance is not received and not desired. So I really feel strongly that for the public morale and the health and safety of the community that this, uh, revision to the municipal code is exactly what our community needs.
Thank you, chief. So Ryan knows that I have kind of an issue with one of the sentences and I don't know if it can be changed. Under D where it says unlawful storage of personal property in a public place, it shall be unlawful and a public nuisance for any person to store personal property, including camp facilities and camp paraphernalia in any public place except as otherwise provided by the city council. And it's to me, that sounds like someone can call up the city council and say they need us to provide a spot for them to store their stuff. And I just, I just don't like that wording. It just is bugging me. So I don't know if that can be changed, but I would like that to be changed.
It, it, it can be changed, uh, prior to the introduction and first reading. And, uh, what I would suggest is instead of the current language, which says, except as otherwise provided by the city council, we change that to say, except is otherwise provided by the code, uh, capital C, meaning the Fortuna Municipal Code. The intent behind, uh, the original language is to allow the city council flexibility for special events um, or to make exceptions by resolution, i.e. collective vote of the council um, for a specific purpose and to not require, um, any exceptions to be done through the burdensome ordinance process. Um, if we do state, except as otherwise provided by the code, um, there are provisions in the code for special events and through the permitting process where those type, where, where that type of flexibility can still be made through the permitting process. Um, but, uh, it, it, the mayor's point is well taken, um, that, uh, we should clarify that. And so my suggestion would be to amend to say, except is otherwise provided by the code, comma, and then continue on as is.
I like that. I like that a lot better. Anyone else having comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, I was curious to know, um, I read the staff report. I did not read the, the resolution verbatim, so I'm not sure, um, exactly what what steps this gives you, like, is it a warning followed by an arrest and is it a misdemeanor? That you actually booked them and take them to jail or what? I mean, I'm, I'm glad for this ordinance. I'm just wondering what kind of teeth it gave you.
So it, it makes prohibitions of the ordinance a misdemeanor. Um, that does not mean that, um, the officers who are citing the individual have to cite and refer to the DA's office for prosecution of criminal charges. It also doesn't mean that they have to cite them in the first instance or second instance or third. It's just a tool at their disposal to cite potentially habitual offenders or particularly egregious instances where misdemeanor charges may be warranted at the discretion of the officer. I'd say that, uh, and Chief Day can speak to this as well. I know he's had some conversations with the district attorney. Uh, the city of Eureka has a similar, uh, program. And they have been prosecuting those misdemeanor violations in-house because, uh, the district attorney's office has not accepted, uh, prosecuting, uh, uh, ordinance violations for camping and other code violations. And so the city of Eureka has developed a policy where they're only going to file criminal charges, misdemeanor charges for individuals who have a number of citation, misdemeanor citations for violating the same ordinance in the same general location on numerous occasions. And in those instances, they'll charge the deputy city attorney, uh, to actually file and prosecute, uh, to completion those more serious cases. Um, the city of Eureka, prior to the Martin versus Boise case, um, prosecuted many, uh, camping violations, um, whether it was one offense or multiple. Um, and there was a bit of an exhaustion factor from the public defender's office, um, on these types of charges. Um, and there was a realization that they need to focus on the more egregious of cases to actually, uh, get effective results. Otherwise, the public defender's office was simply requesting trial um, and obligating the city to proceed all the way through jury trial on one, two count, uh, complaints. Um, and it was an expensive proposition. And so learning from that, I think, and, and I've spoken with Chief Day about this and will continue to have these discussions. But having a policy in place where we focus on the more habitual, uh, offenders or the most egregious offenses um, is probably best for the policy overall. And the last thing I'll add is in some cases, just getting the matter into the court system can be beneficial for both sides. Um, because there is opportunities through creative resolutions to misdemeanor complaints to, uh, mandate, uh, mental health evaluations um, and other conditions of probation that are, you know, beneficial, um, to the individual cited and may, you know, provide social services, um, and other, uh, sources, uh, to them that they may not otherwise be, uh, or have access to. And so I know the city of Eureka has seen, uh, uh, positive results in that respect as well.
One other question, and my rational brain says that we don't have any say in this, but what about, um, entrances to our city that are not inside the city limits per se? Like the northbound entrance coming into town. Can the, can the offender step one foot across the city boundary and set up their camp?
Yeah, it's a jurisdictional issue. So, um, uh, you know, we would be, our ordinances would be effective against those within the city limits. Um, and so if the temporary shelters are, uh, outside the city limits, but close to, um, you know, I'm sure the, the Fortuna Police Department would work in cooperation with sheriff's office in that instance. Um, but it would be, uh, something that the county would need to, uh, prosecute if at all. Um, and if they, you know, have a, a misdemeanor, uh, ordinance on the books at this point, which I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? I don't see. Oh, I do. No, we don't see a hand. Hit the wrong button.
Emily, woman has her hand.
Emily does?
Not anymore.
Oh.
Do you want to say something? I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we'll close public comment and does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt ordinance 2021-750. Read by Title.
And you want to include the change that Ryan mentioned earlier?
With the change, including except as provided by code as the city attorney mentioned.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
A second then.
All right.
I'm sorry, the motion needs to include continuing the public hearing to Monday, December 20th.
And we'll continue the public hearing until December the 20th.
Perfect, because our thing doesn't say that. Thank you, Siana. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Siana?
Ordinance 2021-750, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, amending chapter 9.24 to Title IX of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide for regulations governing camping and related activities within the city of Fortuna. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Locy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you, everybody. Our next item is a supplemental budget request for the implementation of a criminal interdiction program, Resolution 2021-42.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Long and honorable council members. I will be providing about a 10-minute presentation, staff report, and supplemental budget requests this evening, and proposal and recommendation of a professional services contract for criminal interdiction training in the establishment of a part-time criminal interdiction unit. And can we have Lieutenant Everhart share his screen? Siana is going to manage my PowerPoint tonight. Okay, there we go. So drug trafficking organizations and other forms of organized crime, cartels, continue to evolve and become more sophisticated. Locally, our state highways and surface streets within the city provide a direct pipeline for major drug trafficking and the infrastructure needed for the transportation of dirty money, which is used to finance terrorism and other nefarious activity, including felonious crime. As the sophistication of these organizations evolve, so shall the response of local law enforcement in order to best establish resolve. Next slide. So the purpose of criminal interdiction is pretty simple. Interdiction units conduct both inner-city surface street and highway enforcement of motor vehicles traveling within and through the Fortuna city limits who may be transporting illegal narcotics, illegal weapons, and US currency. Personnel assigned to interdiction enforcement utilize K-9 teams certified in narcotics detection, advanced technology such as sophisticated detection equipment, and receive specialized training in the following areas: detection of hidden compartments, criminal profiling, smuggling operations, stash house detection, and pipeline trafficking operations. Law enforcement agencies throughout the county conduct highway interdiction operations to identify individuals that are engaged in the illegal activities, including the distribution of narcotics and other illegal activities. This practice began to be widely used in the 1980s during the nation's war on drugs and includes the deployment of specialized personnel that are trained to look beyond initial traffic violations for major narcotic trafficking, money laundering, human trafficking, and those engaged in terrorism or terrorist activity. Criminal and highway interdiction has proven to be a successful law enforcement strategy for identifying criminal activity and contributing to the overall security of our country. Shown at the bottom of this slide is convicted bomber Timothy McVeigh. As an example in a case study, in 1995, an Oklahoma highway patrolman, who was a specialist in interdiction, stopped a vehicle that was traveling on Interstate 35 for failing to display a license plate. During this encounter, the officer became suspicious of the driver, who turned out to be McVeigh, a terrorist who had recently bombed the Alfred Murrah Building, federal building in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Next slide. Currently, no interdiction enforcement programs exist within the Humboldt region. Our surface streets and state highways again serve as a direct pipeline for trafficking organizations and other forms of illicit criminal activity. The Fortuna Police Department's K-9 Corps and specially-trained investigators have the ability and the opportunity now to disturb these criminal organizations by effecting arrests, confiscating drugs, assets, illegal arms, and other illicit contraband, and are ready to develop a specially-focused program to do so with additional training and guidance. Next slide. The overarching benefit of interdiction work is that it usually yields overwhelming and extraordinary amounts of drugs and other contraband. In some cases, amounts meet federal cutoff limits, allowing for the review and consideration of federal prosecution by the United States Attorney's Office. Whereas California has gone soft on crime due to decriminalization efforts by our legislature over the past few years, federal laws and sentencing are still significantly appropriate and much more impactful. Next slide. In yet another case study, we can look at Shasta County's interdiction team. Between 2007 and 2012, over 5,000 pounds of illicit drugs were seized and removed from the community. $10 million in illicit US currency and assets were seized, along with illegal firearms and other contraband. Shown here is a visual aid depicting the large, extraordinary amounts of drugs, money, and contraband previously referred to. Hidden compartments and smuggling operations are also highlighted in these photographs. Next slide. Retired Deputy Sheriff Chris McQuillan led the Shasta County Initiative between 2007 and 2012 while working for the Shasta County Sheriff's Office. Mr. McQuillan now provides consulting services as the owner of NorCal Training and Consulting. NorCal Training specializes in the development of interdiction programs and has provided this specialized training to hundreds of law enforcement officers. Mr. McQuillan is certified as a criminal interdiction expert in Siskiyou, Tahama, and Shasta County Superior Courts and in the United States Federal Court, Ninth District. Next slide. The police department's overarching goal is to take this opportunity to do what no one else is doing and to specifically interdict loads of drugs and other contraband before they are circulated within our communities by replicating the program model from Shasta County and establishing a professional services contract with NorCal Training and Consulting in order to properly train our selected personnel. Proper training is essential to the success of this program. Our personnel will utilize interdiction techniques, K-9 teams, and investigators to disrupt, dismantle, and defeat supply chains illicit financial activities and illicit drug production infrastructures by effecting arrests, confiscating drugs, assets, illegal firearms, and other contraband. Next slide. I would now like to provide some information on how interdiction work is different from the work performed by the county's Drug Task Force. The Drug Task Force conducts both short and long-term investigations utilizing different and separate tactics, which is derived from information gathering through citizens and informers. The Drug Task Force will then act on this information to conduct surveillance and/or execute search warrants on persons, locations, or vehicles. Interdiction work is purposed to monitor highways and surface streets for motor vehicles engaged in the smuggling of and/or transportation of illicit contraband. Successful interdiction cases will actually be turned over to the Drug Task Force for long-term follow-up and further development of large-scale narcotic investigations, proving our commitment to the regional effort. Next slide. Questions might also include concerns that motor vehicle enforcement stops will increase. Stops will not increase because stops related to criminal interdiction are more selective, and they are based on known intelligence, criminal behaviors, driving behaviors, the totality of the circumstances, reasonable suspicion, or probable cause. Next paragraph. Finally, I should answer the question of whether or not the criminal interdiction unit will be a full-time program. The short answer is no. Only time and our level of success will provide the indicators necessary for a future needs assessment to determine if a full-time interdiction team is in the best interest of the city of Fortuna in the Humboldt region. Criminal interdiction enforcement will occur as time and resources allow and will be secondary to patrol duties and tasks. Finally, participation in interdiction enforcement by our personnel will be an ancillary duty only. Next paragraph. The cost for NorCal Training and Consulting services are expected to cost approximately $26,000, and the purchase of initial detection equipment is expected to cost approximately $24,000. The total cost to develop and implement an interdiction program this year is estimated at approximately $50,000. Asset seizure funds are eligible to use for consulting services and equipment purchases for this program and will be used for that purpose. Currently, the asset seizure fund has a balance of approximately $260,000 with only $80,000 programmed for other products, projects this fiscal year. If approved, the balance of the asset seizure fund at the end of the year will be approximately $130,000. It is possible that the seizure of funds resulting from the implementation of this program would offset the initial expenditures and the startup costs. However, it is difficult to project exactly what the proceeds from this program may be. So staff is recommending that council approve a supplemental budget request to allow for the development and implementation of a criminal interdiction program, and that council adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna authorizing the city manager to negotiate with NorCal Training and Consulting for consulting services for the development of a criminal interdiction program without formal competitive bidding, as authorized by the Fortuna Municipal Code. It should be noted, there are very few options for consultants that have the qualifications of Mr. McQuillan and that are able to provide these types of service in this area. Therefore, staff is requesting that the council find that it is in the city's best interest to negotiate with NorCal Training and Consulting to provide these services in accordance with Section 2.50.070D of the Fortuna Municipal Code, which allows the council to negotiate directly with the consultant rather than formally or informally procure those services. And with that, I can entertain or take any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Chief. We'll open public comment. And while we're waiting for anyone to raise their hand or call in, does the council have questions or comments? I am not seeing any. That was a very well put-together staff report and presentation. Thank you for that. See any hands up, so we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
So I have a question about, is there, is there a rampant problem going on? Is that what prompted this request? Yeah, I guess I'll just start there.
Yeah, it's a good question, Councilmember Stanfield. I think that the problem exists nationwide. I think we're in a precarious situation where our, you know, we're not really employing this type of advanced professional enforcement tactic in this region. And so what we have is surface streets and small quaint communities where, you know, these larger criminal organizations can, you know, they can seek refuge, they can hide, as well as these major highways, such as the 101, which, I mean, the drugs are coming from the Bay Area and Southern California, you know, through our region up into Oregon and Washington, and in some cases beyond. This was, you know, something that we had dealt with before in, you know, the counties east of here utilizing Interstate 5. And there's no reason to believe that, you know, I-5 or 101 would be any different. They're both direct avenues of approach that cover multiple counties and multiple jurisdictions and are, you know, unobstructed from these type of enforcement techniques. So, you know, when there's no deterrent, I think it's reasonable for us to deduce or deduct that these are open pipelines for the transportation of illicit material.
My follow-up question to that is, does this training, maybe I'm going too Hollywood on this, but does this training prevent the accusation or the liability to the police department for profiling, per se?
Well, you know, it, it's interesting that, that, and it's a good question to bring up, but it's interesting to understand that whether it is a criminal interdiction stop or a basic patrol stop, you know, we still, every law enforcement agency is going to deal with those accusations from time to time. The purpose of, you know, this type of interdiction work has nothing to do with racial profiling, but rather to do with criminal profiling, which is completely acceptable and something that we want our law enforcement officers to be able to do. You know, understanding human behavior and the reactions that people engaged in criminal activity display, both verbally and non-verbally, is an important aspect of being able to detect that crime and take enforcement action.
Madam Mayor, I've got a couple comments and a question. Chief, the, this type of interdiction program had been run, but it's been many, many years ago. And I think budget issues and that type of thing, but also it just has fallen off as far as a, a, an interdiction program from throughout Humboldt County, and at least on this side of the, of the state. But just for clarification, as an ancillary service, we still would have the same number of officers on duty to answer calls within the city limits, even though these stops are going to be made, whether they're in the city limits or outside of the city limits.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But Councilmember Locy, that's, it will not change staffing. And I just want to reemphasize that, you know, patrol is the main mission of the department. That's got to come first. If there are available times where we are able to actually engage in the interdiction and type of enforcement, then we're going to take the, the opportunity to do so. But, you know, it's, it's something where, because of the size of the department, our budget, and our staffing, you know, the needs of the community through patrol have to come first.
Certainly, through the years, and especially probably the last three, two to three years, seen instances where arrests have been made, search warrants have been served within the city limits, and, and people, you know, are surprised that we've got this type of activity within our city limits. So I think it's a great program and look forward to seeing the results of this program.
Thank you, Councilmember Locy.
Mike Johnson? You are muted. Did you not mean to have your hand up?
I meant to have my hand up. I also meant to be unmuted.
Okay.
But in the last couple of years, if I remember reading the news right, there's been a couple of individuals that have ended up with two and three trafficking arrests. And I'm assuming that this is designed to interdict those type of individuals who are bringing things in from Southland, bringing it up here into the Humboldt community. And that's, that's what this is designed, as well as the ones that are traveling 101 through here because it's little Humboldt.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, it's well said. I, I just, again, just to reemphasize, I feel like that's exactly right. That is the purpose of interdiction. But, you know, to get a head start and to be able to intercept these loads before, you know, drugs or other serious contraband are distributed within our communities, I mean, that's the goal. If we really want to say we're going to be proactive and we're going to provide, you know, safety and advanced law enforcement services to the city of Fortuna and the Eel River Valley, and the region for that matter, we have to take that proactive step. And if we can, you know, take some of these loads off before, you know, there is a pit stop somewhere in Humboldt or, you know, another community where these things get dispersed and jeopardize the health and well-being of
You know, another community where these things get dispersed and jeopardize the health and well-being of the community. I say, you know, we go ahead and, and at least take a stab at it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, I think I already closed public comment.
Apologize, I have one more question.
Okay.
Um, regarding the asset for your forfeiture funds, do you have other? Things in the wings? I mean, we only have us that pot of money to use, so. Do you have other programs coming up? Is this, I mean, this is your recommendation, so I'm assuming this is the best use of those funds at this time.
Yes. Um, so we have about eighty thousand dollars of the two hundred and sixty earmarked for other programs this fiscal year. And so, um, the estimated uh, approximate amount of the fund at the end of the year. Will be approximately a hundred and thirty thousand.
So do you have other ideas for that or do you need new radios? Do you need new tasers? Do you need, I mean?
Uh, at this time, Councilmember Stanfield, I have no plans for that money. Um, as far as radios and uh, MDCs, we've been blessed by Major E and Major Z. And so, um, you know, that's kind of our state of affairs of where we are.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for the implementation of criminal interdiction program. And approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, Sienna, we have a motion in a second.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna. Authorizing the city manager to negotiate for consulting services for the development of a criminal interdiction program without formal competitive selection. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you, Sienna. Moving on, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be brief tonight. First, just to recap the upcoming meeting schedule, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is on December twentieth. On January third, we have, uh, that'll be our first council meeting of two thousand twenty-two. The next planning commission meeting is on December fourteenth, six o'clock PM. And then, due to the fact that we had a special Measure E council meeting, we canceled the December twenty-first meeting. And the next council meeting is January nineteenth. And the next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting is January fifth at two thirty PM. I just have one item for my verbal report. I just wanted to thank a lot of the volunteers. We had heard that there was a gas outage. Up in Royal Crest, they had to turn off the gas to repair a leak and. Um, I was contacted by Long Windburn and the Fire Department. There was a need to go up and light people's pilot lights for their heaters and their stoves. And there was a lot of people who didn't have access to heat or hot water. And so we, the city volunteered a number of folks everywhere from our mechanics and. Some of our officers, our police chief, myself, a number of us. Um, some members of our streets crew, so we had a, a pretty, pretty big group of people that went up there and helped people turn on their pilot lights as quickly as possible. There's people that were in need and cold, and so we're happy to be able to help and um, fell in behind uh, the Fire Department and assisted there, so. That's all I have for my report.
All right, thanks, Merritt. I really appreciated the city staff jumping in to help. A lot of older people up there who didn't know how to do those things for themselves, so it was really, really good that we could be there for them. Um, future agenda items? Anyone other than all of our stuff we already have on our list? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson.
I'll be quick because I know my internet's been acting up bad tonight, but. Got the opportunity to go to the employee recognition breakfast and I enjoyed that. And recognizing all our employees, that uh, that's the heart of our community and the heart of the city. Uh, Fortuna, the ones that go out and get the work done, so I appreciate that. I did attend a webinar today on. Uh, electric vehicle charging stations and. It kind of reminded me of hearing about the impacts of the new housing regulations in that. There's more things to do and less discretionary ability involved in them. And some of them are, we have five business days to send a report back. Regarding the uh, installation of, and the permits for the installation of uh, the. Nations twenty days to approve them, so it's not a very user-friendly from the city side. It's non-discretionary. And there is a checklist that needs to be put up online and a bunch of things. So, um, I was very eye-opening on that and. In the interest of time and not listening to my start-stop internet, I'll quit there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Loci.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I will try and go fast here. Uh, on the seventeenth of last month, I had a LAFDO meeting. Which uh, opened up with a discussion of expiring commissioner terms. Uh, we will have one city representative, um, um, open term that's coming up. And maybe an alternative, but I'm, I'm representative, but for sure one city representative, which will go before the. City Select Committee of which our mayor is a member. Um, and I do have a suggestion that I'll make to you in private. We, public hearing on the McKinleyville Municipal Service Review and to include the expansion of the sphere of influence. To include the Patrick Hugh Creek Community Service District, which McKinleyville CSD already provides service for. And we held a public hearing on the Manila Services District, MSR. And we continued that hearing into next month. Um, when some of the commissioners requested some additional information regarding the flooding on some of the more vulnerable communities within the district. Um, and they also asked for some additional documentation on climate change with some mitigation factors on flooding. We had a very interesting report from Troy Nipollini, who is a longtime commissioner and longtime US Weather Service Officer. Who reported on the tectonic plate in the Manila area being pulled down. Creating an inner seismic sea level rise in addition to the sea level rock increasing. So it's kind of a double whammy with regard to Manila because of that. Um, on the eighteenth, then I have RCA meeting, which started with a presentation on the upcoming budget, which could produce less revenue than anticipated. Prior to now, um, with a possible cash flow issue coming into the first and second quarter of next year. And RCA will be investigating a line of credit to solve that issue and hopefully by the third quarter, revenue is expected. Increase to give us a positive net effect. Uh, many of the CCEs throughout California are experiencing these types of fluctuations of budget and cash lines. Because of so many variables coming into, uh, from last year coming into the new year. Including customers unable to pay their bills. Um, in addition, our reserves seem to be tied up with a large security deposit that had to be paid to secure the said Dreaming Solar. Project, which is going to add a huge benefit to RCA. Lastly, the Ray Mills Memorial Freeway Project is on its way with donations coming both by the, by the GoFundMe page. And direct donations to the Fortuna Police Employees Foundation. And I have to thank uh, Chief Casey Day for getting this going and. We've been hearing a lot about it through, through the um, oh, several months, um, and because of him, we've got this happening. Those direct donations can be sent to Fortuna Police Department at six twenty-one eleventh street. And donations can be made through the Fortuna Police Employees Foundation and those are tax deductible. So thank you to all those folks and businesses who have contributed and donated to this very, very worthwhile cause.
What, what total are we trying to get to? Does anyone know?
Six, yeah, six thousand. So I think we're almost, we're approaching the halfway mark.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've got a lot of Christmas um, programs coming up and everybody, um, get ready and enjoy Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Um, so you already heard from Fbid, uh, and thank you Emily for all the amazing work that you've been doing. Um, besides uh, being a mom and, and having your own career, so um, volunteer work is. Um, oftentimes not celebrated enough, so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you. Um, and if somebody didn't hear, uh, because they jumped on late, I will tell you again that. Fbid and the Downtown Businesses Association will be having an open house on Friday. With the uh, Algre lighted Christmas parade coming through town, leaving Redwood Village at six thirty and, and ending up. On Main Street in downtown Fortuna. Um, I also attended a webinar on the first of December regarding new laws that affect cities, so. Um, not that I'm going to memorize all that and share with you guys, but just in case something comes up in our conversations that jogs my memory. I'm smarter than I was if I didn't attend it, so. Um, also want to appreciate uh, everybody that contributed and put together the employee appreciation breakfast. I know Sienna and her staff had a lot to do with that and, um, it, it's a, it's a real feel-good moment for everybody. Uh, want to, want to, you know, publicly recognize all the employees of the city of Fortuna and how much they do for us and. Uh, it's such a behind-the-scenes thing that, that makes this place look so beautiful and run so smoothly. And I just really want to make sure they feel appreciated during this time. Um, Arch and Rec hasn't met since I got together with you last and. Um. I think that's, oh, I wanted to say one other thing and it's not related to any of my committees, but uh. I want to give a shout out to whoever put together the uh, first annual at Houseworth Basketball Tournament at Fortuna High School. I thought what a neat, neat. Um, memorial to a great man and to create a scholarship in his name with the sponsorship dollars raised. I just thought was a real tribute to him.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Tammy?
Well, being one of the last persons to report, a lot of it already has been reported, but I do have one more thing to add. Um, the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce is having their Dazzle Fortuna um, contest, so um. After you go to the Trek Parade and visit downtown, there's a map if you go into the chamber's website and you can see all the houses. That have entered in the contest and go around. I went around last night and looked at quite a few of them and there's a lot of very nice decorated houses in Fortuna. So go take a tour of that. That's always fun to do. That's all I have to report.
All right, thanks, Tammy. So being the very last one, now I don't have to say anything, so. I did have a redact meeting, um, we continue to make some loans to keep businesses going, um, you know, adding to cash flow, bridging. Funding gaps and all of that, so it's just um, very active organization and I really enjoy being on that board. Um, my working group that I was on for the League of California Cities was somewhat disappointing, um. I was amazed and appalled at how many council members, mayors of other cities just think the state is here to help. And they are perfectly happy to sit back and let the state dictate what we should all be doing and. It just doesn't seem to bother them at all and it's, I don't know if they had picked a different twenty people to be on that group. If the, if that would have changed or if that's just kind of the mindset of a lot of the leaders in California, but it was very disappointing to me, so I spent a lot of time. Listening to people say things that I just wanted to beat my head against my iPad, so anyway. That group ended without us getting anywhere, so, um. I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We will see you again on January third, but for tonight, the council does have a closed session. We have two items that we are going to discuss, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to section five four nine five seven. Of the California Government Code Title Finance Director. And a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section five four nine five six point eight of the Government Code. Vacant land along Eel River and thirteen twenty Riverwalk Drive, negotiating parties are the city manager Merritt Perry for the city of Fortuna. And land M K as negotiating parties under negotiations price and terms of payment. So if no one has any other questions or comments, we need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Sienna will get us all fixed up and thank you.